Good evening. The June 10th meeting of the Longview City Council is now called to order. Tonight, David Wright is out of town, but state law allows members to participate in the virtual meetings, and we are glad he is able to participate with us tonight. Welcome, Dave. Tonight's prayer and pledge will be given by two different individuals. The prayer will be given by Pastor Ricky Ricks, Director of United Methodist Church, and the pledge will be given by Carter Terry. Carter is attending Pine Tree High School as a junior. He's on the Pine Tree Debate Team and is also on the golf team. He is outside of school. He's a member of the Boy Scout Troop 621, based out of Alpine Church of Christ. At the troop, he served as their SPL for four terms and as a quartermaster for six terms. He also is in the Venture Crew at Alpine, where he'll be serving as their president for the next year. He's on the council level as a president, over East Texas Area as a council for the next school year, and finally, he is a proud Christian. So please stand for Pastor Ricky Ricks and Carter Terry.
Let us pray. Holy God, we thank you for your countless blessings, for the beauty of your creation and the wonder of your children. We are thankful that you give to us the opportunity to live together in peace and to seek the good of all who are around us. Particularly, we are thankful to be part of this great city, to share together as citizens of Longview. And we pray, God, that you would give us grace and wisdom that we might live to build a better world for all your children. Today, we pray especially for those who are leaders among us. May it be your vision that guides them and us. May it be your wisdom that inspires us all. And may giving our best to your children be our constant goal. For this meeting and for the work we share together, we give you thanks, and we pledge our lives to build a better world for all your children. In Christ we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Bless you.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Ricks, and thank you, Carter. Appreciate you all for helping us out tonight. We are now to employee recognition. Tonight's employee recognition is Mr. Darryl Young. Darryl has worked in the Water Distribution and Collection Division for 28 years and has always gone above and beyond to exceed our citizens' expectations. In 2019, Darryl worked alongside a resident for about a year to address several water issues that she had as she worked to get back in her home after a tree fell on it. Mr. Young would even come by and visit with the older citizens to check on her and see how things were going. Darryl exemplifies the values of the city of Longview and the Public Works Department. He is a dedicated employee. He can always be counted on to provide outstanding service to our citizens. Mr. Darryl Young, please join me up here, Darryl.
That's a fine young man right here. I've known Darryl about as long as I've lived in Longview. He's just a great guy. As you can see, he's humble beyond belief, but he always does his job with a smile on his face, and he makes people happy, and he just brings joy to all those around him. Darryl, we really appreciate you, man. You exemplify what we want in the city of Longview, and you represent us in more ways than you can ever imagine, buddy. You're the man. We appreciate you, buddy. Thank you for your service.
I'm glad y'all didn't tell me this was happening. That lady, I wouldn't have came.
It wouldn't be any fun that way, Darryl.
Yeah, but if y'all could have saw that lady, y'all, it just, it just overwhelmed me what she was going through. But Danny, I just wanted to thank all, there's a cast of thousands, I could thank, but there's three people in this room I really want to thank. One of them's Nora Dixon Snotty. I know she loves it when I call her that.
That's why I call her, too.
Also, you, Mayor Mack, for all you've done for me in this. But really, I was going through some stuff, and I probably wouldn't be here literally. I mean, that's not a cliche. I almost died last year. Rollit McFie, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for Rollit. He did so much, and he's looked after me, and I just can't, I just want to thank you, Rollit, for all you've done. And I know there's others all over it, but I just really wanted to thank those three people right here, so that's.
Thank you, Darryl. Hold on, come on. Come here. Come on. That's a fine young man. Thank you, Darryl. Appreciate you, buddy. Okay, now we're to community recognition. Okay, you know, usually when I do community recognition, it's usually someone that I either know fairly well, or I have close contact with them, or something personal, or someone has told me a story about them, and they've done something really good. But tonight's a little bit different. I'm going to tell you about someone tonight that's community recognition that I don't know very well. I hope to, because this is the kind of person I want on my team every time, because when there's a need in Longview, this person fills that need. Unselfishly, with no expectations in return. When you, when you think about certain things in Longview and you say certain names, you just recognize things. If you say Chick-fil-A, you know Chuck King, right? Well, when you say Bubba's 33, Chelsea Dorgan. Come on up, Chelsea. Okay, this is a 100%. She has no idea she's up here for this. You see this young lady sitting right here? She thinks she's here to give her a recognition award, not for herself, because if she would have known this, she would not be here right now, because her mother's had surgery today. She's had a long day, and she came here because she thought she was presenting something to one of her employees, and that's the kind of person that she is. She would never have come if she knew this was for her. She feeds children that are hungry. She feeds churches. She feeds schools. She does teacher appreciation. She feeds the firefighters and the people at Mod Cob during the COVID crisis. She feeds doctors, nurses, both hospitals. She feeds them all. This is what she does. This is Bubba's 33. This is Chelsea Dorgan. Thank you. That's another good girl right here. I want her on my team. And you all do not have to stay, Chelsea. I know you have things to do. Feel free to leave. We appreciate you coming and doing this tonight, okay? Thank you so much, and thank you for getting her here.
Hey, I'm also leaving y'all some vouchers so you can pass them out. They're $5.
Give them to me. Give them to me. Are you kidding? Once again.
There's enough for everybody. I made sure.
Thank y'all so much, Chelsea. Anyone in the audience, feel free to come up and have a voucher this evening. Once again, that's community service. It's amazing what people do with their talents and what their gifts have been given to them, so I appreciate that very much. This is really special. Okay, back to citizen comment. I do have a couple of speaker cards tonight. We'll start with Robin McLamore.
Good evening, everyone, council, and everyone that's here. My name's Robin McLamore. I stay at 208 North Green Street, Heritage Tower, the new senior building. And it's just amazing that everything is tying together. What I was going to speak about was service. You know, we have to really, really search deep inside to see if this is what we're to do. Are you here to serve the people, or are you here to serve yourself? I know we're here to serve the city, but you can't serve the city without serving the people. It all has to work together. I stayed at Alton Plaza. I can say that was the worst nightmare I've ever had. It was a lot of interstructural problems, and I tried reaching out to the person in my district, but to no avail, no answer. They say, "Call me." I call, no answer. I make a comment on Facebook, they say, "Call me." I call, no answer. You know, my thing is, if you're not going to serve the people, or if you're not going to be here for the people, you don't need to be in that seat. Now, I am living proof that when I heard this ringing out in the community that you don't do these things, I don't go by what people say. I have to experience it for myself, so when it happened to me, it's like, it is true. And how can we trust our council people, our city officials, if we don't trust them? It's a lot going on in this world. You know, in our government, we're living in a trust deficit. We're always talking about financial deficits, but we're living in a trust deficit where you just really are afraid to trust anyone. Anyone. Look at what happened in Athens, the mayor, in Tyler, the principal, you know, in churches. You know, who can we trust if we can't trust the people that are in position? Who are we to reach out to? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. My next speaker card is Mr. Ron Borman. Ron, do you want to speak now or when we get to the action item?
We'll just wait until the action item.
Thank you, sir. I'll keep your card right here. Thank you, sir. Was it me? Oh, coming from Dave. Okay. I didn't know where that's coming from. I didn't see a baby in the audience. Okay. We are now to our public safety update. Gentlemen, I know it's been a year and a half since you spoke last, but let's don't make it a year and a half getting through this, okay? Chief Bishop?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and Mr. Bonds. It's been a while, so if we're a little rusty, please excuse that, but nobody told me before I got up here that my pastor was going to be here giving the prayer tonight, so I'm a little bit more under pressure tonight. So I'd like to start out with this public safety update to recognize some of our officers. As you recall, last month, on May 10th through the 14th, we celebrated National Police Week. That's the week that we recognize and award our employees who have gone above and beyond. They're dominated by their peers and then selected by their peers for their respective awards. And I'd like to take a minute just to recognize those employees that have gone above and beyond this last year. Our Police Supervisor of the Year is Sergeant Ryan Gibson. Our Rookie of the Year is Dylan Hartsfield. Our Public Safety Telecommunicator of the Year is Constance Wooder. Our Detective of the Year is Kirby Deloche. Our Public Safety Communications Supervisor of the Year is Jessica Prue. And our Civilian of the Year is Haley Griffin. And our Officer of the Year is Luke Altman, who serves as the Par 40 Police Area Representative. So I wanted to publicly congratulate them and thank them for the job that they did this past year. Last week, we had the opportunity to commission our newest officer with the department, Jerome Norton. Jerome is a six-year veteran of the Shreveport Police Department. He has come and applied with us. On top of his six years with Shreveport, he's also a Staff Sergeant with the United States Army, where he's served for the last 14 years. So that's his wife, Jasmine, who also works for the Shreveport Police Department that has pinned this badge on. And I want to welcome Jerome to the Longview Police Department and congratulate him as he starts a new career here with our agency. Want to give a little shout out to the youth group at Alpine Church of Christ. They came down. It's great that we've had these COVID restrictions lifted where we can start our interactions with the youth again. They come down yesterday and brought some gifts for the officers and were able to spend some time with them, doing some various demonstrations out on the lawn of the police department. We also had Alex Azar's Taekwondo Summer Camp Group came down. Just so happened, we had both of them there at the same time, so we had our hands full, and it was great for the officers to get back out and interact with our, with our youth. Also this week, we're finishing up a law enforcement academy with sixth and seventh graders at LISD that is being put on by our school resource officers to teach our youth a little bit more about law enforcement and how we operate, and hopefully steer them in this career path. I know Chief Steelman does that a lot, so we're kind of trying to get in front of them a little bit. Last month, if you remember when COVID restrictions come into place, I come before our council and asked you to approve for our agency to be able to do our own basic police officer academy. Last month, we started our third academy, where we have begun to train some of our recruits in-house with our officers, who are subject matter experts in the respective areas that they, that they teach. This academy here, we have 12 recruits in there. We have recruits in there from Longview PD, Tyler PD, Athens PD, and Smith County Constable's Office Precinct 1. So not only are we able to train our officers, but we're also able to give a hand to the other training facilities and training police officers in our area. We are going to be hosting our first Citizens Police Academy since the COVID restrictions have been lifted. We're now accepting applications. This academy will start September 9th. We'll meet on Tuesday and Thursday nights from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and anybody interested can get an application and download it from longviewtexas.gov/cpa. We'd love to have individuals come and see some demonstrations and presentations and learn a little bit more about how we operate. And then our National Night Out. We've already begun preparing for National Night Out. Of course, we had to cancel last year's, but our National Night Out kickoff party is going to be September 7th from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Mod Cob. And we'd like everybody to come out and register your Crime Watch group and let us reunite and connect and get everybody prepared for National Night Out, which will come up on Tuesday, October 5th. So we're excited about getting back to what we were doing pre-COVID, and we encourage everybody to come out and visit with us and register their Crime Watch group. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Bishop? Thank you, sir. Good to have that again. Chief Steelman.
Good evening, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Bonds. It is great to be back in chambers. Our last meeting of doing these public safety updates was on February 27th of 2020, so it has been a while. And I prepared my first slide, but Mayor, you kind of already deflated it a little bit. This was going to be Slide 2 of 114, because a lot has, a lot has gone on in the last year and a half, and I had a lot of stuff to talk about. And Mr. Finley and I were having some chatter back and forth last week, and I guess he was so concerned that I was serious, he didn't even come to the meeting tonight. So I kind of wasted this slide. You deflated it, so we'll move on. One of the more exciting things that I get to do as the fire chief is promote and advance people in their careers in the Longview Fire Department. We had the opportunity on the 3rd to recognize the promotions of 13 of our employees. And again, this is such an exciting thing for me, to see these members of our department growing internally and moving up the career ladder to be a better resource and asset to the future of the fire department. And those personnel in our department that recently promoted to Battalion Chief were Justin Jenkins and Travis Pickle. To the rank of Captain were Jamison Butler, Dusty Burks, Adam Deary, and Marcus Delaney. To the rank of Lieutenant were Jason Davis and Jimmy Lawrence. And to the rank of Fire Driver Engineer were Bradford Conrato, Chris Shirley, Chris Sims, Trey Thompson, and Brian Woodrum. And several of these employees, they've already been in their positions for quite some time, but because of the pandemic, we really tried to reduce the amount of large gatherings we were having, so we're certainly glad to see some of the restrictions being lifted so that we can kind of catch up and then get back into the normal process and timing of how we normally like to do these. So we certainly want to wish these, wish these members well in their new, in their new career path and in the positions in the department. I know they're going to serve us well for years to come. Speaking of the pandemic, that activity is still taking place, even though, as you've seen in the national news and in the local media, it has certainly scaled down quite a bit. Members of the department were in the Gray County Jail earlier this week, just yesterday, doing, cut the first round of COVID-19 vaccines on several of the inmates in there. Took us about half a day, but we were able to inoculate or vaccinate inmates that were in the north, both the north and the south jail, got about 183 of them done on their first dose, so we're certainly glad to pitch in and partner with our partners in Gray County to get that population taken care of and protect them from the virus. Speaking of the pandemic, our activity is still happening out at the hub at the Fairgrounds Complex. Our total dose count is up to 64,248. We are scheduled currently to do those shots again this Saturday, and so anybody that's still wanting that vaccine, there's still plenty of it to go around. We recommend that you go to the website, make an appointment, but you don't have to. You can just show up, and we're taking walk-ins at this point. So the clinic only will run till 10:00 a.m., so we'll start at 8:00, and we'll be out of there by 10:00, because like I said, our numbers have reduced so much that we're just not seeing the reason to stay out there for eight or 10 hours at a time now on each one of these days. So anybody who wants the vaccine, come out before 10 o'clock. We'll be happy to take care of you. Again, with a lot of the restrictions being lifted, we are back into our normal processes of doing a lot of our internal in-house training as far as fire training, EMS training. Some of the things that we're trying to slowly turn back on are our public engagement training activities. So one of these, and we've talked about this a lot, is our Community Stop the Bleed programs. Our next offering of this is Monday, June 14th. Anybody of business wants to get together, individuals are welcome to come. We'll take anybody to get this important training in their hands, to teach them how to essentially save a life in the event of a severe trauma or a bleeding event. So there is a website listed on there. I'd encourage somebody to go to that and register so that we can kind of have a head count and know what to expect for that training opportunity. And also, since it's been a while, I'd like to remind all of our citizens about our emergency notification process. We are in the midst of severe weather and storm season. We've already experienced a little bit of that, so the city does offer the Smart 911 app and service. It's a free service provided by the city so that you can receive timely weather notifications or emergency notifications when things that are bad that are happening, when you hear the sirens going off, this is the piece that tells you why. So we strongly encourage people to go to the website and get themselves registered for text messages, emails, landlines, cell phone phone calls, whatever they prefer. And finally, on a lighter note, I get to ask this question a lot, and I have for my 30-something years in the fire service, do you guys really get cats out of trees? Well, we had the opportunity, and I actually got to drive up on this call about a week ago. You can see the little white kitten up there. It's a cat up in the tree. And the unique thing about this particular response, and it had been up there a while, I believe a lawnmower scared it up the tree, and just the fact that those guys showed up, they threw that ladder up against a tree limb, and they sweet-talked that cat. I guess the cat was probably a little bit terrified that somebody was actually fixing to climb up that ladder and try to rescue it. It started backing down the tree on its own, so low-low, the cat was safely back in the arms of its owner down there. We're happy that we could play a role in that, and I never knew about the cat whispering talents of our station, our crews at Station 5 and 6 on B ship, but they did a great job handling that. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Steelman? And to both of you chiefs, I just want to thank you for keeping it together over the last year and so many months. You all have been the glue to the city, and we appreciate that more than you know. Thanks for these updates. I know it's, it's trouble, and it's hard, but I appreciate it, and the citizens appreciate it, so we'll keep doing these updates as we need to, and when you don't have something to update, that's, that's okay, too. But when you do, I know that we can count on you guys to keep us informed, to keep the citizens up to date on what's going on, so thank you both very much. Your service is greatly appreciated. We're now to consent agenda. As I mentioned earlier, David Wright has joined us virtually tonight, so to accommodate the broadcast and the proceedings, we'll conduct business a little bit differently tonight. We're going to vote according to a show of hands. Also, please raise your hand to make a motion as well, and I will acknowledge you. If Dave needs to speak, he'll also raise his hand to be recognized. And if for some reason we lose connection with Dave, we're going to go on without him. So there you go, Dave. Also, be mindful that let's don't talk over each other, because that way Dave can hear us, because he probably can't hear multiple microphones at one time. So all items of consent generally will be considered together unless anyone would like to pull something off for separate discussion. If so, please indicate at this time.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So a motion to approve the consent agenda? No offense to the motion. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. We're now to zoning. Sandra Joy will present the zoning items. It will be held, a public hearing held to consider M 21-01. Ms. Joy?
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Bonds. This request comes from the Planning and Zoning Department. It is a request to reclassify an area at the northeast corner of Eastman Road and Cotton Street from low-density residential to retail and medium-density residential. As you can see on the future land use map, there is commercial to the west of this property across Eastman Road. Furthermore, there's an island of medium-density residential along Cotton Street. The future land use map is intended to serve as a guide in establishing appropriate mixes and intensities of land use throughout the city. It is not the intent of the future land use map to identify exact use on a parcel-by-parcel basis. Furthermore, it is not a zoning map. However, it does have a close relationship with the zoning map in that it is used as a part to determine the appropriateness of zoning requests. The future land use map must remain flexible, being changed and updated to meet both new policies and changes in development trends and patterns. Eastman Road is a principal arterial roadway, and Cotton is a minor arterial roadway, as classified under the Highway Functional Classification Systems. Both roadways are appropriate for retail and medium-density residential uses. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require a public hearing, which is now open. Would anyone like to speak in the public hearing? Or have any questions? Ms. Joy? If not, may I have a motion by raising a hand, please?
Motion for approval.
Mr. Carpenter has made a motion.
He spoke. I raised my hand.
Mr. Wade has, I can't do this hand. We have a motion in a second. Please raise your hand if you approve them.
You didn't follow the rules.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. I know a wonderful family that used to live in that area, and I think one of those family members is sitting in the back of this room, Mr. Blunt. It's always good to have you in council chambers, all of you guys. Pleasure. Thank you all so much. Wonderful family. We now have a public hearing to consider application S 21-04 filed by Verizon Wireless. Ms. Joy?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit for a telecommunications tower in Neighborhood Services zoning district. A SUP is required for a communication tower in Neighborhood Services zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties, particularly if there are any residential properties nearby. Last year, this applicant did submit a specific use request for a traditional tower that was 215 feet tall. The Planning and Zoning Commission took no action on the item, and the applicant has submitted a new application that has a different design and height. The new design is a monopole tower that is approximately 155 feet in height, and that includes a five-foot-tall lightning rod with a proposed lease space of 40 foot wide by 40 foot deep. The area will be fenced with a gate. The setback from the nearest property line is approximately 19.21 feet. The tower and the equipment would remain within the boundaries of the fenced area. The city of Longview does have a water tower located directly adjacent to this property to the north. In the UDC, it does require that no buildings or structures or portions thereof shall be erected or maintained by any property owner, leasing, licensee, contractor, utility, or government entity not otherwise exempt by law, which creates interference or obstruction to the city of Longview's law enforcement, public safety, general government, or emergency microwave, telecommunications tower, and emergency broadcast corridor. After discussion with the applicant and staff, the city of Longview does request the following condition be placed on the specific use permit for approval for the proposed Verizon Wireless Cell Tower located at 3008 Gilmer Road. I will read this condition now. It is determined by, if it is determined by the city engineer in the future that the applicant Verizon Wireless Cell Tower would cause communications interference between the city's proposed or existing communication equipment when Verizon Wireless will make available space on their proposed cell tower for the placement of antennas at the range specifically between 130 to 140 feet or other height as agreed to in writing. The antenna space on the tower will be provided at no rent cost to the city of Longview, while Verizon Wireless shall bear no cost whatsoever for the city's installation of antennas on the tower or to make the tower ready for the city's antennas. Colocation of city facilities will require colocation application to the tower owner for an structural engineering evaluation of the cell tower. Structural upgrades to the tower are the responsibility of the tower owner. Planning and Zoning Commission took no action on this item. Staff does make a recommendation to approve with a condition. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require a public hearing which is now open. I know, Ms. Joy, you all have spent a lot of time and effort on this, and I appreciate the due diligence that you have done to ensure the city is protected as well as Verizon. We want to be good corporate partners with our Verizon people as well. Everybody needs the communication, but I appreciate the time that you all put forth for this. Any discussion or questions of Ms. Joy? If not, is there a motion by show of hand? Mr. Wright?
Mr. Carpenter, I'd like to move to approve this application. I appreciate the work that these folks have done to come up with a better tower than they started out with.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. We have a motion for Mr. Wright. Is there a second? Mr. Pirtle seconds. We have a motion and a second. Please show by raising your right hand. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We are now to a public hearing on application Z-21-10 filed by Regina Phillips. Ms. Joy.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a rezon for approximately 3.372 acres of Abstract 2 AR Jordan Johnson Survey Track 13 and 13-02 Section 1 from Multi-Family 2 to General Retail Zoning District located at 1230 South High Street. The applicant would like to have a takeout-only restaurant at this location in conjunction with Thrive, a local nonprofit group. This portion of South High Street is classified as a principal arterial roadway and retail development is appropriate along this roadway as access management is followed. The Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This also requires a public hearing which is now open. Any discussion, Ms. Joy? Once again, I think it's fantastic. We're finding ways to develop and redevelop in all parts of town, but especially in South Longview. So I think this is a wonderful opportunity to increase our visibility in South Longview and bring something there that is not already present. So hats off to those that are involved in this. If there's no other discussion, the public hearing is now closed. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have some questions?
No, no.
Public hearing is now closed. May I have a show of hand for a motion?
Move to approve.
Ms. Nadia has a motion to approve. Ms. Ishihara has a second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Public hearing held to consider application Z-21-11 filed by Sensata Development. Ms. Joy.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant is requesting a rezon for approximately 4.291 acres of Abstract 262 of the A. Jordan Survey Track 19, 20, 21, and Section 5 from Single Family 4 to General Retail Zoning District located at the northeast corner of East Cotton Street and Southeastman Road. The applicant would like to construct a SEFCO convenience store at this location. This item is associated with the future land use map amendment request earlier on the agenda. Eastman Road is classified as a principal arterial roadway and East Cotton is classified as a minor arterial roadway. Retail development is appropriate along these roadways as long as access management is followed. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require a public hearing which is now open. Any questions of Ms. Joy?
I'd just like to congratulate Ms. Joy on getting this one done. I know they've been working on it for a while.
Absolutely.
So without anything else, I...
Great job. Public hearing is now closed. We will have a motion by show of hand. Mr. Wade has a motion.
Second.
And Ms. Ishihara's a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're now to action item. Thank you, Ms. Joy. Consider resolution to authorize the city manager's designated to negotiate and execute an agreement between the City of Longview and Ron Borman for water and sewer service outside city limits. Mr. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Bonds. The item before you is a request for city water and sewer service for a parcel of land that's outside the city limits. Go to the next slide. This is a map of the location. It's outlined in turquoise. The city limits there is the line in red. It's there at the corner of Hollybrook and Alpine Road. Per the Unified Development Code that was recently adopted, administrative approval for services outside the city limits are no longer allowed. That is in relation to the comprehensive plan that was adopted where one of the top 27 items listed was recommending that city services not be extended or connected to properties outside the city limits unless annexation is requested. So the applicant is requesting your consideration for connection of the services. The property is currently served by water and sewer that was extended a number of years ago, approximately 2015, 2014, 2015. The property there to the north on Hollybrook, the self-storage facility, Mr. Noah Yoder developed that property. And at that time, the city allowed extension of services and he sought on behalf of the city easements and extended the services and provided taps. And as you can see, the green line is the sewer line. The blue line is the water line. So there is services adjacent to the property, but as I stated, city ordinance does not allow administrative approval of those connections. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I know we'll have some discussion. So we'll discuss, and then Ron, I'll have you speak in just a minute, if that's okay.
That's quite fine.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carpenter, you have a question?
What were the colors again? Red is...
The red is the current city limit boundary. So it kind of bisects that property there on the corner. And then the green line that goes to the north and then east and west, that's the city sewer line. And then the blue line that goes up Alpine and then cuts over, that is the city water line. And then that's a fire hydrant at the end of it.
Ms. Ishihara?
Yeah, thank you. I thank you. And I know Mr. Borman has made efforts to help educate us on the particular issue. And I believe I understand the issue at hand being that council approval is needed because the UDC would not allow without the request for annexation. In this particular case, the infrastructure is already there. So as opposed to extending it, I really consider this to be a situation where we are just connecting to existing infrastructure and additional customer to our service lines and don't really consider this to be something that would or should be annexed under the UDC provision. So I am personally in favor of approving the request and authorizing the manager to execute the agreement. I feel like that's the most reasonable thing to do for the landowner here and would be appropriate based under our current laws.
And you know, I know this is an unusual situation, Michael, because the, you know, if the UDC hadn't taken effect, which we just approved that not too long ago, this wouldn't even be an issue too much. But according to the UDC, as going forward, no outside city water sewer connections are made without annexation request or annexation by the City of Longview. But in this instance, there's no benefit for us to annex this piece of property. There's nothing, there's no benefit to the City of Longview. The sewer and water is already there. It was there prior to the UDC acceptance or whatever you want to call it. So I think it's only prudent that we consider doing this in this instant as a singular instant, not a blanket statement that we're going to do this, you know, over and over repeatedly. But it just seems to be the right thing to do in this instance because of the circumstances that we have before us. Am I looking at that the wrong way?
No, sir. You're absolutely correct.
Okay, well, thank you. Mr. Carpenter.
Michael, how many property owners are in that piece of property, in that that's inside Hollybrook to the loop back to Alpine?
There's three tracts of land there.
Individual owners?
I believe so. Mr. Borman could probably speak to that. I know he had mentioned that they have kind of some agreements in place for development and things. But I believe the corner of Alpine and the loop, the south portion, that's one tract, one owner, Mr. Borman's piece, and then the residual is a separate owner. And I'm not sure if it's an entity or individuals. I just can't remember on that.
Move to approve.
Hold on just one second. Just one second.
Go ahead.
Do you have any other things to say?
Well, just as a point of order, do we want to do this three times or do we want to do it once?
Mr. Borman would probably like to, Mr. Borman, come on up, Ron, and enlighten us on, because I know he'll answer that question.
I think the others are connected already.
Yes.
Yeah, well, and I might can answer that just real quick. So if the property, if the areas that are outside the city request water service in the future, then that would be a request before y'all. The request is only to serve the property outlined with the turquoise. And not knowing what the development is and so forth, you know, it may be that they develop on those properties and the actual water service is inside the city limits, on the portion inside the city limits. So there's a lot of unknown.
Because inside the red, to this side of the red is all inside city limits.
Already inside the city.
There's only a small portion outside the city limits if you take out the blue triangle.
Correct. Mr. Borman's tract is the only one that's wholly outside the city limits.
Right. Okay. Mr. Borman, please. Thank you, sir.
That was an excellent question. Excuse me, Mr. Markham's watching from Austin. He's the gentleman that owns the four-acre tract outlined in black. The next tract to the north is William Beard, who's the trustee of the Lucille Sylvie Beard Trust. My tract is the, excuse me, the one outlined in turquoise. And then Mr. Yoder has a tract just to the north of there, which has a little driveway, but no building. All of these were conceived, designed, approved, and built in 2015. So with respect to my application, I would ask the council to consider going ahead and approving Mr. Markham, Mr. Beard, and Mr. Noah Yoder's other tract as they were all conceived, built, and approved at the same time. The taps are all there. I guess they could come back and go through all this, but it might perhaps be easier if we could have an oral amendment to my request and just wrap it all up.
Robert's going to tell you, you can't do this.
I'm afraid we're not popular.
But I think to that point, we could instruct staff that this would be something appropriate to put on the consent agenda next time.
Yes.
Council is fine with those items.
Sounds completely reasonable. And Mr. Pirtle and Ms. Ishihara, thank you so much for addressing my concerns so quickly. I really do appreciate it. Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you. Okay, now, any of us have any discussion? Okay, now, Ms...
This is a, this is the prime example that the UDC is not perfect.
Of course.
And contractors and developers fight this daily. So we need to have some give and take in this, and this is an example of one of those issues of give and take. So we will probably come across this many, many more times in the future. UDC, even though it was, a lot of time and effort was spent on it by the developers, by the city, and by the builders, it's not a perfect document. So we need to be able to have this kind of things to be able to do. So...
Good point, Mr. Pirtle, because that's a monstrous document with all kinds of fluidity to it that we will have to, I mean, that's what we're here for, is to reasonably make decisions about what's best for the City of Longview and not be robots. If we just follow a map and a booklet, we wouldn't even need to be up here. So that's our job, is to reasonably look at things and decipher them and take great direction from city staff and then make good, honest clerical decisions on what we're doing. So I think that's exactly what the process is here, and I think it's working the way it's supposed to work. So...
Again with Dr. Mack, that's 561 pages of the best reading you would ever want.
It's not going to happen. Sorry, Jim. Not going to happen. That's why I like Michael so much. Okay, so do we have a show of hand for a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Ms. Ishihara has a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Carpenter, second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all very much. And thank you, Mr. Borman, for being here and helping us out with this.
Mr. Mayor, we can instruct the staff to do the other three that we discussed.
Yes, we will put that on a consent agenda in the future. Michael, will you work with him on that, please, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Robert, thank you for keeping us from doing things that we're not supposed to do. Who needs Jim? Good job, Mike. Good job, Robert.
Everything I know I learned from Jim.
Well, now, consider resolution to appoint interim city manager, Mr. Bonds.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to bring this item forward. Several weeks ago, I requested that council have an executive session where you discuss the appointment of an assistant city manager. And I appreciate the time you took and to discuss this matter and the consideration of it. So as city manager, it's my responsibility to recommend candidates for director-level positions, and that includes the assistant city manager. And personally, I've worked for the city since 1999 in a variety of roles. And during that time, we've virtually always had a assistant city manager position that served alongside the city manager. The position traditionally helped to reduce the direct reports to the city manager as well as assisting with the management of the budget and other organizational wide initiatives. It also provides some continuity during the absence of the city manager. And I had the pleasure of serving as the assistant city manager from 2014 to 2017. And although I worked with the city in public works for many years prior to that, having the opportunity to be in the assistant city manager's role provided me an opportunity to learn and interact with other areas of the organization, including working more directly with the mayor and the council. And as you're aware, we have not had an assistant city manager since I've become the city manager in 2018. So during my time as the city manager, I have certainly been fortunate to have a very capable team of directors and managers that have provided great stability throughout the organization. And I acknowledge that we have been able to function without this position. But I believe that it would be beneficial for operational efficiencies and long-term planning to now fill this position. I'm recommending that this be an interim position, and I'm recommending that it be done without a change to the budget. And as we all know, this last year and a half has been a very turbulent economic time. And I believe by taking this action as an interim step, will provide the council with some flexibility to evaluate this move in the coming months and decide whether it's a permanent change that you wish to leave in place. So historically, in times such as this, when we're looking for director positions, we've opened it up. We've even hired search firms to do nationwide searches. But more often though, we have tried to be an organization that is able to grow, equip, and promote our leaders from within. So as I've mentioned before, we certainly have a strong team of qualified employees, especially in the executive team, and several of those would be able to ably serve as the assistant city manager. But after much thought and consideration, it's my recommendation that we appoint Mr. Roland McPhee as our interim assistant city manager. Roland, as you're aware, has served the city as the public works director since 2014. And prior to that, he was the assistant director of public works since 2002. He has successfully guided the city through significant capital projects and several bond initiatives, as well as leading the largest department in the city in terms of budget and personnel. So he has been actively involved in the community recently, serving as United Way campaign chair, and more recently as the president of their board. And I have worked alongside Roland for all these years, and I know he'll be very successful in this new role. I would also like to ask that the council recognize that if you approve this action tonight, that we subsequently appoint Mr. Dwayne Archer, who is the current assistant director of public works, to be the acting director of public works, and that wouldn't require any council action. So I'll be glad to answer any questions. Roland is here as well, so...
Any questions of Mr. Bonds or Mr. McPhee?
I have any questions, but I'd like to say something just briefly.
Please.
Roland, you've always been a problem solver for me, and I appreciate that. I think this is an excellent suggestion, one that I fully support. Also, of course, that couldn't have been timed better. I think Mr. Darrell Young agrees with this recommendation. And I can't say enough about the having the admiration of your employees over such a large department, what that says about your leadership. So I look forward to serving you, with you in this role.
And on a personal note, I don't think we had, we had so many choices. We could have so many choices to fill this role because we have so many wonderful people at the City of Longview that could do this. Not everybody wants to, and I don't blame them, but we have opportunity. And I'm glad to see us promoting from within because I think that builds a stronger organization. I think it leads to better productivity and knowing that there's always a chance to move up. And I think that's the strength of a, the strength of a good organization to do that from within. And like I said, there are so many opportunities to have people do this, and I'm just thankful that we have people willing to step up and want this job. So I look forward to working with you, Roland. You have a lot of people watching you and making sure you're doing the right thing. But, you know, Keith has filled this position very well, and he will guide you through this in the coming months. And we will continue to evaluate and see how we are. But I think the City of Longview is looking very strong in this move right now. Any other questions, concerns, comments?
Well, I think we should hear from Roland. I mean, I think Roland...
Well, I think we should hear from Roland. I mean, I think Roland...
Ronald, would you like to say something, please?
But just to come up and...
Thank you. I just wanted, the kind words that have been spoken, I've visited with many of you privately, and I'm humbled for the opportunity. Obviously, the newspaper said I didn't have a quote because I didn't want to be presumptuous. It's certainly at the discretion of the council, but I want to appreciate the opportunity and the consideration. It means a lot to me.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion by show of hand. Mr. Wade, we have a motion. Is there a second? Ms. Snoddy, just Ms. Snoddy's next. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We are now to items of community interest. Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mayor. Continuing with the ongoing bi-monthly food drive sponsored by the East Texas Food Bank. Next date up will be June 17th at Grecton Methodist Church, Pine Tree Road. There's no qualifications to make it to that. Just show up, and a group of happy ladies will run out to your vehicle and load your car full of groceries. And that's ongoing, and they're up to several hundred families each time they do distribution. Second thing that's going on out there at Grecton, just for the community interest, they're having a free garage sale. You say free? Yep. Tomorrow, 9:00 to 2:00, nonprofits and churches in our fair city and area may go through the bus barn and choose anything they would like to have to help with their ministry. And that's tomorrow. And then on Saturday, it's open to the entire city to come by and pick up. There's everything from chairs to TVs to strollers, you name it. So it's all, it's all there. So again, I want to share my thoughts and thanks again with Roland. We've had two instances in my district where I've actually got to go out in my ear with the crews. And we've got some really good people that work for our city, and I think they were shocked, but I mean, I didn't get on the, Keith doesn't want me to get on the big equipment. But...
You can rake.
Yeah. But it's just really, it was encouraging. In fact, the last council meeting, we were getting hammered while we were all sitting here and there over a situation on Jordan Valley Road, Mayor. And by the time I left Council Shamers and got out there, his crew was there, and they worked into the night fixing it. And folks, I'm telling you, that's, that's what we're about, you know? It's a positive thing. And we've been fighting some drainage issues, and I've just really been, been excited to work with the police department, the fire department, and all the groups that I know and love, and the staff too. I mean, I've asked hundreds of questions because I have not a clue.
That's the way to learn. Ms. Snoddy.
Good evening, everyone. I just also want to say congratulations to Roland. He has been for me, anytime I've called, he's spot-on handling everything, so I do appreciate that. And also to my crybaby friend, Daryl Young. Congratulations. Well-deserved.
Mr. Wade.
I just want to recognize June 19th, Juneteenth celebration parade festivities in the park at Broughton Park. Would like to invite everyone out to be involved. The phone number to contact is 903-921-0139. And I want to recognize the fact that we're all back comfortably in the council chambers. Last year was a brutal year, and we all suffered and had to jump in and help our community through a very, very rough time. And it's amazing to see that we actually made it through something that during it, you know, you didn't really think they were being into it. So mayor, city, chief of police, chief of fire department, all of the city staff and everyone that works to help us get back to where we are. I tip my hat to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ishihara.
Just congratulations, Roland. Congratulations, Dwayne. You've been an excellent problem solver for me as well, and I'm happy for both of you, and I'm happy for the city. That'll be good for the City of Longview. So congratulations.
Mr. Wright.
Oh, yeah.
Whoa, I need to unmute myself here.
There you go.
I'd like to thank Terry, Scott, and Richard for their help in setting this up tonight so this would work. They've done a lot of work, and hopefully, next time somebody wants to be out of town, this will go pretty easily. And also, on the feed tonight, I saw that my head was superimposed over Chief Steel and Chief Bishop's head. So I hope for your guys' sake, it looks different on TV.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Hope you have safe travels. Get home soon. Mr. Pertle.
Nothing for me.
Mr. Bonds. Okay, I just have one quick thing. Every year, this time of the year, I get to participate in Mission Longview. It is the funnest, coolest thing in the world. It's where a bunch of kids get together and do, they do mission work in our community. And I'm so grateful to this group of people that put this together. Melissa Kitchens, one of our own, Clay Kitchens, Fire Department's wife, is in charge of this, and she invites me every year to give these kids a charge, to go out in our community and do good work. And you know, what better opportunity is there for kids to spread love and happiness and join our community than to help others and be there to do it for a whole week? And so, you know, I know lots of kids go and do mission work other places. It's nice to see them doing mission work in our own town. We've got plenty of places that could use that kind of work in town. So I hope others will see that and join in that because it's a wonderful thing that Mission Longview does. So congratulations to all those kids, all those adults that put that on. So with that, I guess we adjourn. Thank you all for being here.